I was gonna ask.
Chris, do we have a microphone?
So, is this in?
All those meeting to order, let's start with pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marcy, any announcements? No announcements. We're right through minutes, June 3. Minutes to have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, and there were a couple of things. Um, under five D.
Can you get page one?
The page number. On the minutes. Yeah, so it would be unapproved page two at the top. Uh, the D is under, I can't capitalize, not a big deal. And one other thing was in paragraph eight F on page three. Um, there was a misunderstanding that was printed in the minutes. I'd like to clarify, when I wrote the charter and made the presentation for the community and the communication and community collaboration committee, the work that I was suggesting was more systems-wide approach to issues, to find solutions to issues that I had seen since the beginning of my time on the school board. Like the website sometimes having outdated information or not having information that maybe some parents would like in there and finding new additional ways that the community could help support staff and students and work with them. My response to Jenna's suggestion that I could instead write an annual newsletter like Dunbar can send out was sarcastic and I would like to apologize for that. I don't want to do something like that. I would much rather work on systems approaches to sort of finding solutions. If the board would like to reconsider their vote to not go through with a communications and community collaboration committee, I would be happy to add that into our list of responsibilities to send out a community-driven newsletter. However, my sarcastic response was more out of frustration because I, um, because just an hour or so before, the New Hampshire School Board Association had recommended that we have a communications committee. The board voted against it, so I was a little frustrated. Again, I would like to apologize, but I do not want to write an annual newsletter.
Do we have a motion in two minutes?
Do you have any changes?
Yeah. Yep. Would anybody like to reconsider?
Well, this is about minutes.
I approve second.
We can talk about, maybe in the open comments.
That works. Okay.
Any vote favor?
I did, I can.
All the votes. I will abstain since that was not a meeting. Moving on, presidential presentation, educational focus, how to pose a link for polling locations.
Yeah, well, thanks for having us. I'll have Vice Chair Brennan discuss this with you. She has been certainly in charge of this.
Yeah, so as you know, a few years ago, we moved the polling location from BMS to the community center. And the discussion at that time was around making sure that the schools were safe, that schools were in session, there was concern about the members of the public going in and out of the school at the time. Since that time, we now always have school close on election days. So, and that is partly in, as a result of Dunbar and schools being closed that day. Totally reasonable for home schools to be closed that day. But since that's the case, I think you've all probably noticed that when we hold our elections at the community center, the logistics around getting in and out of that parking lot, getting in and out of that building can be challenging. And I believe that these schools, whichever one would work well for you all, would be better situated to hold our elections and polling locations. So, the board is here to ask if you would consider joining us in this proposal and see if you have any ideas of which school might be amenable to hosting our elections. So if you can get it done as well. In addition, we know that the community center is increasingly becoming more and more limited on what it can do. And so, just as a plan for the future, it does make sense, in our view, to hold the elections in one of the schools. You have the schools, you have the faculty. It's easy in and out for everyone. We've done it before and we just asked you if you consider doing that and we're open to whichever school we choose.
Selfishly, this last election, we had actually discussed that. To get people to building, to see all of the renovation projects that are happening here. It didn't work out, but I think this is cool. We're open to it for sure. Dwayne and I talked about it. It sounds like at some point, we considered this school as a high school was an option just because of the distance from the parking lot to gymnasium and accessibility. But I think either we answer yes or no.
Did you want to tour up this location to see if you're feeling this would work better since we're meeting here?
I think we're all probably familiar, the board is probably familiar with both the BMS and EBS location. Everyone is insensitive to what works best for your arrangements as well. And knowing that you do, uh, teacher training days on these election days and we know that there are multiple of each year, the next one would be in March. And so we asked that if you would consider what building would we want to do if they're slow and then we can get the ball going for as soon as March. Do you have a preference?
I remember voting at BMS. It was, it was really.
I think it was a parking.
We come over so.
Right, we get over, but it's just, it's more closer parking to the gym.
Certainly would help with the visibility to get us more closer to the road and all. Again, sensitive to community as well, so.
Where do we do any professional development?
I think it depends. So, we go back and forth in March and really for our pages. Question mark for the days over at the high school, starting at high school. And we also do, so it would just be something to have a plan for. We're not sure on these days.
Would the board be open to taking the vote to accepting holding for elections, town elections, also primaries, the elections? So that would be, next year would look like March 10th, middle of September, and then the end of November. Those are three dates.
Can you say those again? March 10th?
March 10th is the first election. That would be a town election. And then, uh, next year, because it's a given year, there would be a primary, state primary in the middle of September. And then, the general election would be in November.
So the September one, we didn't address because kids are in school in that month.
Here's where we had, um, voting at BMS. There were days where we would still have school, but it wasn't this way. It would be a little turnout, which is primary sometimes was. That's always the case. It seems like turnouts increased over the last few years, I think, of all elections. But we would have schools sometimes. We would just work around that. We'd have, like lunch in the classroom. We would still manage to have similar to what we did at Dunbar. They close on half their gym. They had that goal to do that. And when we looked at all the sites we had in the group and Peter was really involved in that, that was, that's pretty similar to the big base in the lot. And that's what it was. And the accessibility was right there. It's very, very easy. Close to the road. Park, but way back. It's worked out. You know, we can isolate the cafeteria from the rest of the building, which is huge for your elections. We have people, we route them right to the vest field. They never enter the building. Shut the fire doors to the cab. So it's, it's a closed loop system, basically. It works, it works okay.
How would, how would that work for our lunches though?
Um, the last time we did it, we ate lunch in the classroom. Or we also were using the gym at that point. So we actually rolled tables right down to the gym. One time we had to be a little careful cover, but if Peter set it up where if people were coming to vote, I don't even think they would want this going down because it was closed. Young kids would come in the back, come in, pull out, create a little door.
Yeah, our staff was parked out of the high school to create spaces for voters coming in. And then, Dwayne was the shuttle driver instructor there. He does all the work.
Other duties?
Are you ready to come to the show?
I'm ready. I got a hat and everything. A little tip job. I don't get many tips.
I think, Adam, are you in support of this? I mean, you would be the one dealing with it.
I, I'm happy to do it. I mean, I think that's the role of school, right, to support the community. And if that's what the community needs right now, really fine with that. I think, I think we can make school work right around it. And then, big elections, it's closed anyway, as you said. You're gonna have either parent-teacher conference day in the fall, November. Day for March, and that works just fine. It was, we were, we figured out.
I think the other thing was, you know, just listening to like the bus radio, like the major election that took place. It was a mess. It was not easy getting through there. There was a lot of chatter about, we actually had buses move a long way. Didn't have access to the building. Didn't want to get into that for the voters, so.
How did we deal with the buses coming to pick kids up from the elementary school?
If we ran them right through the loop. I don't remember us doing that differently. I think we did dismissal like we do dismissal. And that was a little bit of an inconvenience probably for the voters. Because you've been there, you're there at dismissal all the time. We have to shut down traffic. So, just knowing that that'll be a little bit, that'll be a voter inconvenience for about 20 minutes.
I think that's something we could absolutely advertise in advance to people to let them know on a September election. Because it'd be only that day.
It's only that day.
And historically, primary elections are fewer, you know.
I recall that a message going out, that was like, that was like the town newsletter. I remember reading it like, you know, this is where voting is gonna take place. Just keep in mind, you know, try not to come in this time. But if you do, just vote, but there's a lot of traffic.
Our CTE volunteers do a great job with what they're working with now, so I'm sure they would complement well.
It's a good opportunity for the kids to learn about the civic process too. That'll be in every social studies classroom that day, I'm sure. Learning about what is a primary, what is the goal of this day, you know. It's good.
I'll make a motion to approve voting at the, um, BMS, and I will second.
All the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any vote? I have you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
While you're here, anything else?
The other issue we had is just continue to keep this press of any larger projects that we have. We obviously, at some point in the future, at the end of the day, we'll have to deal with the community center. And that will cost some money. So as, you know, I think if we just communicate, you have bigger plans that we align accordingly to stabilize the tax base. So that's the only other answer I have.
We've been very involved with the CIP process, so in theory, we'll, we'll never have to ask for anything different than a million dollars in every annual meeting, so.
That's right.
But in theory, it's.
So I'll just get right there.
As a board representative.
In theory. That's the point.
As a board representative on CIP, I do thank you for your patience and for acting for this process. It's been really helpful to get an idea of what we do have coming out in life to plan for appropriately. And that certainly will help if you continue evolving your policy and get closer to some of our larger projects.
Well, and I think also, as somebody who's been through budget process for three years now, that I think that this working relationship that kind of got started just strongly between the budget committee and the school board and the district is like, it's just a wonderful, kind of, we help each other out. It doesn't have to be contentious, right? We're all for the same thing.
That's a process where I can stay around and work on that.
Um, no, now that you've told me you're gonna have someone rotate, that's kind of all I need. Then I'll update you with tentative dates if that's okay.
There's a committee, just for us, the committee that is coming together to be twice as large after school. We're considering teaching for the school over five years. And I've said, we won't say who will be on it, but we'll have a strong rep. I'm happy to serve as backup service as I have to enter just school next year and we'll be here for a while. So I've just committed that we'll have someone to slide forward there. I might not always be the same person, but we'll have a representative.
When, when are you looking for those to start?
This month. Given, given that it's the fourth, we may not have two this month.
It would be important to get those as soon as possible if we don't figure out our challenges.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You sure you don't want to sit? Someone pick me up.
The old lady bro.
Old lady bro. Bye, thank you.
We'll be going to public comment.
You guys can have a seat.
Yep. Public comment. We don't have a microphone, so I'm sure I'll be able to do this here. Maybe just raise your hand so I can see who wants to speak. Public comment, anyone?
I'm happy to be back.
Is the old time public comment?
Uh, no, there will be public comment at the, almost, you have two more opportunities.
If you haven't signed in, sign a sheet over here.
All right, there you go.
Again, there'll, there'll be two more opportunities for public comment. Uh, moving on to SAU, administration report. Marcy, do you need to add to your report?
I'm not thinking it's just to reiterate our school being. Our focus here is on working for graduate artificial intelligence and.
Carolyn, thank you.
Ian Storey, who was on the other later song.
Any questions for Marcy? Not all, to Dwayne.
Well, I have a bunch to add, so. So, to start with, our, as I wrote, our, our audit was the week of the 18th. You know, kind of not to be, refer anything, but I, I think that's a central thing that. The board should require that. It does require that. Me and our staff to do that every year. So, it's a lot of work, but it's. You see what it's happened in some other places. And, you know, not having an audit, I mean, it's, it's just unacceptable. So, if we had it on the 18th, again, like I said, it's a lot of work. It's six weeks. We check all of our work. It's not a big plan, and so I'm glad it's over till it's over. I talked to administration about some of the things that we need to do. But once we complete that, our end of the year financial report is now completed for signature for the board. So we can send that into both the Department of Education and Department of Government Administration. Expenditure report, I'll flip on that. That's your standard. I'm just letting you know it's the first one of the year. But the big focus for me is our summer projects. As you know, we go to annual meeting. The last couple of years, we asked for a litany of pretty large-scale projects. And we did a bunch of those over the summer. Listed those in our board. Many of them are complete. A couple of them are in the end stages. I certainly will answer any questions on those. But that I just kind of focus on, this project here, that was a multi-year project, almost a year project. We've got proposals, student information, vision, renovations of this building. Hope when people came in, they saw a lot of schooling, everything was fantastic. But my kind of assistance toward, eventually behind the board and staff, the support that we had with the project was, you know, really helping the project go. It's both, it starts with the staff and it's been being flexible. We asked people to, multiple times. We had parents for knowing that their kids were going to be, you know, kind of displaced at times, distracted at other times because it was an active construction zone after multiple years on this site. I'm glad that it's done because it's kind of like, you know, I mentioned in my opening day remarks that the value of this particular project is $2 million, so the entire Dunbar budget. So it's almost like another entity, financially managed over multiple years. So I'm glad that that is over as well. But the, the start of this project started with this board and your, I mean, you know, this board vision. You know, putting yourself out there, asking for a significant amount of money. You know, to get the project. The age, like those. So, you know, super thankful for that project. Just want to touch on a couple that I didn't list there. The biggest one for me, kind of a never-ending project, is the well project that the Memorial School continues to not be complete. I think that project I had no issues with, this project, and I don't believe it should have been like that. But it just seems like everything that could have cropped up on that one has. The one thing that I will say is we're very close being done. But we have not completed that project yet. But we obviously are still in the task to, um, open and stretch there. And then, you know, I mentioned it, select board had before we started, the front entrance project that felt away. It was not our project. That was a town project. Town paid for. You know, Town D W did that because that's a town road. I, you know, we obviously, we just started the school. And I think aesthetically, it looks great. What I, my appeal is that we need our students and adults and staff to actually use it correctly. Right? There's a crosswalk there. There's flashing beacons that tell people to stop. That is done for safety. What I see sometimes is kids going in the old crosswalk because the paint is still there. It's faded. Really should use it as a design, because it's designed so that people stay safe crossing. So that's my appeal. Happy to answer your question.
Um, so with the well, how much longer, what, what's, what are we waiting for now?
Waiting for two things. Waiting for, this can get a little weird. But in the holding tank, there's actual probes that are in the tank. Basically fills the tank when it gets low enough for the well to fill it. Right? The way that that system is designed is, you know, so the well pump will get activated. It goes into the building. The water gets treated. It gets dumped in the tank. It's a ground holding tank, and then that's what's used during the day when water's just going to flow. Right now, there's no probes in that tank because we're waiting for the actual drains of that to be installed. So we're actually manually filling that tank. So we can turn the pump on manually, fill it, turn it off. That's not how it's designed. It actually kind of works like, um, it kind of works like a toilet, actually. And when it gets to a certain level, it shuts it off. When it gets down to a certain level, turn it on. That's how it's supposed to work. That's how a lot of everything's working. That's not it's all. We're waiting for that part. And we're actually waiting for the test results back, the treatment that we had to add to the Memorial School for the new well. When we dig a well, you never know what that well is going to, you know, when you do the initial test. We found that that well was a much higher level of maintenance in that well. So we had to add treatment to the building to take care of that, which is not easy to do. If you've ever been in that part of Memorial School, there's not a lot of room in there. So you have to shoe-worn in that additional treatment. Now, we're gonna be able to that install. We've been able to send that water out for the new lab results. And that takes a little bit of time. It's not a great return. We have to test for everything. We have to test for everything that we have required to test for. Not just that. Those test results to come back. My hope is that next meeting, when we have, we're gonna flip, the switch will be flipped. Everything will be in the holding tank and everything will be running as scheduled.
Did you taste the water?
I have.
Is it better?
Listen.
Is that a little question?
I'm not the right person to ask because I'm gonna say yes.
Okay, you got the old water to find you.
Whatever.
I, does it smell better?
It's, this has been, this has been not the smoothest project. I mean, most of our projects are, we have great staff. We have great contractors that do this work for us. Most of our projects break, start at the end.
It's often a hidden.
This one's bad. And then this particular project, the delay that this project's taken means that we haven't been able to start a irrigation project, the track field at the Memorial School because we're using the old well for that. So we have had to pump that until next summer. So it's just a, one accident.
Well, thank you. So, one other, one other question is, we were waiting for this well to be done and everything done. It would use to then go through and do the fourth round of testing for the lead. Has that been done?
No, because we're not done yet.
I mean, technically, we have access to water.
But it's not coming.
Oh, it's.
It's not hooked. We're not using the new well. And we were also waiting for this project to be done because there were a couple of other locations that we swapped out late. But we're reinventoring, reinventoring this building. And redo the high school and the Memorial School. We'll do all of those with that.
Okay, and how long should, how, did they give you an idea? I, I think, I feel like this is almost like the whole system issue with getting, um, the technology that we had forever to wait for to come in. Do we have any idea when this is going to come in, the brains of these probes?
I was told that it's gonna be next week, and they've been pretty.
So they've never.
We still have to install it.
They've never slipped before?
Well, and the, the thing that we have to do to install that is we have to do that over a weekend. Because the minute that you open up the holding tank, you now expose the closed system to the environment. So we do a bunch of work in the holding, the domestic water holding tank. We gotta re-fluorinate the system. We gotta re-flush the system. So it's a bit, what happened with it?
Anybody who lives in Bo, probably knows. We have to do that. Anybody who lives in Bo, probably knows, we have to do that.
It's a...
Not just my house.
So, you know, a really good weekend to do it would be Columbus Day weekend, but I don't have a weekend, so I'm kind of pushing to have that done sort of that way.
Another thing too, I was thinking when we're all done with all of the B M S, maybe we could send out a poll to the students and see if they feel that, they feel that the water tastes...
I like that might be a big match to Dwayne's ego after all.
I know, it would be great.
Why are we assuming the worst? Maybe they're all going to be so happy and be like, Dwayne, you're the hero.
No, I didn't mean that.
I haven't heard complaints so far this year, because I think Dwayne's right, I do think that new holding tanks made a big, big difference, like the old holding tank was pretty grim.
It's pretty bad. I know, it's... There's a video that I have somewhere of them pulling that one out, it's not very...
I just feel like, I just feel like students came to us as a board, and they said, this water tastes horrible. What was that, a couple years ago, two, three years ago? And I think, and I think that it would show them that they have agency in their lives and personal power for us to then go back to them and, and ask them if we have succeeded. No? When I have confidence.
It'd be great, I love it.
I know it's not public comment here, but my eighth grader says it's bad.
Well, I'm going to take that to the bank.
And a one.
My fifth grader that's coming in, coming from B E S water doesn't know.
I take no stock, and the fifth grader doesn't know. I think that's it.
I just got a quick question on the premier field.
Yes.
How does that go?
Well, it's, it looks great, we are, that's in the last stage, we are waiting for unitil to come and electrify what is being installed, so our understanding is, all of the work by the light contractor is done, if you kind of, you know, leave the high school and turn right, go up White Rock, you're going to see brand-new hole, there's brand-new meter there, a bunch of brand-new equipment up there, that's the work that happened to us, basically, the electrician broke the switch, and we have opted to use them.
And they're going to do that before next Friday, right?
Yes.
Yes.
The well too.
It's supposed to be this week, this is the week we were told that, and, and really, the contractors that did all the install, the subcontractors for the electrician, we had cut across one small section of paving, that's all done, all the landscaping's done. I mean, they're done, if you walk around there, those are installed, we just need to...
What, can I ask, this is off-topic now, you just made me think of it, what are they doing? Is it to the access road? Because during soccer game, they were just, there was...
Yeah, so the power, the scoreboard power goes up past the scoreboard, up the access road, out, there's, there's actually a meter out there, or was a meter out there, and it was attached to a, I mean, essentially, a railroad tie, it's a square post, I can guess that volunteers probably put it in, I don't understand, I don't know, to allow it, but they did. They changed all of that, because that was not done. So, the lights technically run off the same feed as the school, it comes from the same location, it's a separate meter, but, you know, it's the same. And that was very, you know, very lucky for us, because they were talking about, you know, where they were going to come from, and that made the most sense, you know, kind of watch the project, which we did, was we pulled in there every day, it was not as , I mean, basically, like, they had to come all the way from the school and come back up without the way, this was a lot.
I have a question. So when the lights are done, we said in June, in our June meeting, that we would revisit the concern of one of our community members, just making sure that the lights don't have a lot of light pollution. I know that you guys explained how they work and stuff, but we did say that we would revisit it and just make sure that...
Yeah, so maybe October meeting, we'll revisit a few times whether...
Yeah.
And we've been to, we have the same spec package as the lights that are installed next week.
Yeah.
And to bend to that field, I mean, you're driving there for nineteen, you don't even know they're on, like, the technology is so much different now.
I'm excited to see it.
The Halls Brookline lights are very similar, again, those are back at their schools, so it's a little different, but you cannot see it coming up. The more, the light that you're going to see more than those lights is the light on the cords, that's all that's, that light is bright, and it shines out into wherever, you can really tell that light's on, and I don't know what to do about that one, but, and you can tell that the traffic lights are on, and things like that, these ones are very much directly. Yeah, it's very exciting, I hope.
So, Marcy, this question might be better for you, with the, I'd like to have a better understanding of what teams are playing under the lights, and if we're having a balance between our female athletes and our male athletes, so, right?
So is many, we're encouraging all of our teams to participate, I can share a field of luck? It's not a field for good luck, it's very challenging, I think, play there, just a little interest there, the service soccer, across the wall.
So, and we're breaking it up so that they all have equal opportunity to play under the lights?
There are four scheduled games for all, I have hundreds, I don't know, I don't know if you know, I'll tell you when, yeah, actually, we have a...
I know soccer has.
Boys and girls, we've got one game scheduled for...
Yeah. So, okay.
Can that change?
So one's soccer for females, one...
And then for pending, not a lot of cancellations, because of weather and schedule changes, our goal is to have one, boys and girls, baseball soccer, later in the season, which is kind of new, that's kind of unofficial, I probably should have said that.
No, you did.
But that's our, that's our goal, is to have that happen, I think that's going to be a really nice plus for the ministry teams, for those young families.
What about, what about the, what's the name of the team?
Unified soccer?
Unified, thank you.
What about the unified day? Play right after.
No idea, I'll read first, thank you.
What, anyone else with a question? We're on Jessica, anything to add?
Nothing to add?
Any question on the staffing changes? Since you've had some anticipated resignations, where are staffing levels at?
So we have one reservation to this group, we have two OTs, I mean, they're posted, and our speech and language pathologist, the meantime assistant is the... And that, now we have three point eight, which means the longest, and one full-time facility.
So will you post to try to hire that?
No, so that was sort of what I was mentioning, like, unique circumstances and these sort of shifts, and where those needs were, we were able to make that work with this speech and language.
So I have a couple of questions, so, one thing is, as a breakout, how many of the district employees have...
I don't know, I'm going to walk the answer, I just think that would expose, so I did not sure.
That's perfect. Do we have, is that number going to change after next year, like, what you're projecting or what you're...
There will be some changes, which is what I mentioned again, yes, small, small numbers, so that would...
So, no, no problem, it's all right.
We're doing a change.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know, I just, I was just curious, the way that you wrote it, it was like I didn't know or something. Another thing too is, how many services are we using contracted services for right now?
So we use contracted services for our orientation mobility, which is a service...
How many of those?
How many students?
Oh, how many, how many contracted services?
That's one person.
Just one person, okay.
That's not a full-time person. Yeah, we also contract to drive to the deck, and they...
So we have, and are they full-time or...
Those are one-offs, so years ago, when my role as director of student services really went away from almost all content spaces, so there aren't employees, there aren't people, they weren't kids, they weren't staff, so there, we don't have enough of a need, it doesn't make sense for us to hire a full-time teacher, that's an example, because we don't have enough people there, that's why.
Okay, and no paraprofessionals?
We have employees at the high school that have not really built any experience with that, and we are still, we are pursuing...
We have a contract.
So how many, how many of those?
We're on the piano about two or three contracted persons at this school, we've had some scheduled meetings, that again, that kind of is a question that we have to answer, and we do have the OT position posted, but maybe we can fill that with a contracted person, and sometimes in some cases, when people work out, they can go to a permanent thing, so that makes it a service.
Those are work budget-wise, moderate services are typically quite more expensive than our older employees.
And that's sort of why we want to, it's one of the reasons we like to get a higher contract services, and when you're contracting for the service, you're paying for the direct service, you're paying for trial time, you're paying for the more time, what we missed is that legal time, job, staff, and personnel, so it's, I mean, it is... And I don't think that that's a good one, so can you kind of help us on the situation, how it actually works out with the project?
So when we have a contracted person, and do we continue to look, or do we just, like, say, at a certain point in the year, that student has a rapport with that service person, so we're not going to change it up, or do we continue to look and say, if we find somebody that can be...
Yeah, so I think that it's always reasonable to have a district employee, so you can hire, and have the position to work for applicants, and buttons and situations, you might not want to...
So you continue to look throughout the school year?
Yeah, yeah, and...
I feel like we have a kind of combination, like, like, but when it comes to, when it comes to specialist education, those positions are the, you know, positions, so we're going to continue to look for those positions, because that, so, that is a successful...
Moving on, oh, Zach?
No, I don't have anything to add, most of our staff have any questions?
I was curious, how many staff members, we had those in the grade escape this year?
I don't have the exact number, but it was in seventy-five, it was a good, it was a good shot, we changed this.
And how many of those, would you say roughly, or paraprofessionals?
I could go into this question, I don't know, probably five to ten.
You know, this is a really stupid question, what is C I A's...
Training instructions, that's...
Coming from your background.
Right, exactly.
But it was C I A's...
I figured out what the I name was.
I was wondering if we were also planning on moving forward with Bryce's suggestion in June, for having that vision of a late graduate, that launch to, like, move at...
Oh, interviewing, like a seventh grader?
Yeah, it's just, he said, starting at sixth grade, going to...
Seven, so we get that part, we have that one.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah. Are we going to try and do that?
That's not...
Oh, I have just arranged with I T, and...
Yes, you are intense, we think it's a great idea, it's okay.
Oh, thanks.
Connor will be able to...
Give us time, serious time.
Yeah, 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 no, I was just curious, because we, he just brought it up, but I was like, we should really consider it.
That was a good idea.
Any questions for all? All right, moving on to students, board member report.
Oh, you don't have any?
It was in the, it was in the packet, it was...
Don't let me stop you.
Yeah, no, it's a good start to school, it's a start, sports start as well. How's the cell phone man on?
Honestly, I feel, yeah, the students adapted well, like, they're more socially, they're more social, and the staff is, like, understandable, respecting that it's a natural need for kids to want to go on their phone, but also the kids respect the staff if they have to.
Yeah, it's not as bad as you would have expected.
So do you feel like, what you guys are in luck for, when you guys are in the off period, like, working or, you know, do you see that there's more, more, like, face-to-face kind of communication, do you think that it's benefiting kids socially?
Yeah, I'd say so.
I haven't really noticed a big difference in terms of more socialization, although I have seen a lot of people on their phones.
Yeah, it's just like, the urge is still there, to, like, look on your phone?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, like, especially with checking your times, that's one thing, because, like, they're not a lot of their phones at school, actually, so, like, that's...
Oh, good feedback there.
That's what, that's what the students don't know how to do.
So maybe, so maybe Owen could add in to curriculum, teaching on a digital...
Or maybe we need a digital box.
No, no, you can handle a box. Oh, I have one other question for the two of you. So first, I'd like to thank you for getting this, so we can read it at the same time as the whole packet, it was really, really helpful. Another thing too, is I was wondering what your plans, the two of you, what your plans might be for this year to, to work with the student body, to get information about where you think the, the students' ideas and suggestions on what the school board and administration could do for them, what are your, do you have any plans for...
So correct me if I'm wrong on this part, but we can't, we can't do that surveys like the school, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's like a thing we can't do anymore.
Well, it, there's, there's factors we have to consider, so I would say if you're curious about doing one, I would run it through the surface.
Okay.
So we have like a suggestion box, do people ever do like suggestion boxes anymore?
We used to, people just put tissues in them, so...
I can see why we moved away from that.
Yeah.
All right, well, some things to consider.
Yeah.
You guys are both really smart people, I'm sure you can...
Where will we put a suggestion box?
We used to put one in the library, like, the learning commons was a great spot for it, just because there's so much movement in that space, so, and it was on the desk, it was like, sort of, could be seen, but, yeah, can be that.
Just assignments, so please, you know, tissues.
Or just have an email address that people could email to?
Yeah, we also have advisory, which is a great place to utilize, seeing all students at the same time, so we could look into that for sure.
Thank you both again.
Any else? Moving on to district administrators' report, starting with Lori.
I just have one quick thing to add, we found out in early August, I forgot to put this in my report, We Hampshire Fisher Cats runs a reading challenge, where families can participate, your job reads five words, and you get two tickets to a Fisher Cats game. The top five schools in the state for participation get a check for a thousand dollars, and you can go to one of the top five schools. We are one of the top five schools. So, um, they presented it the night before, uh, first day of school. So Alicia Mongella, uh, one of our office assistants, and so with her family, so we did middle schoolers pick up our checks. Um, but the kids will find out tomorrow at the opening of that late, so we're very excited.
Questions for Lori?
I do, um, what is the storybook that you wrote about?
Oh, when I... So in Google Gemini, there is an option in the AI that you can create a ten-page storybook. So, um, one that I had tried and shared with staff was just, you know, how you come into the building. So you can tell it what you wanted to say, what your routine is, you can keep tweaking it for what the pictures look like. Um, one teacher did it so that when her kids came in, they had a storybook that had all their names, so it'd be, "Welcome Jack to this class, welcome William, welcome Clara." So they could just, it, it is all AI, but it was pretty neat to see how you can personalize it. So the good use of other people are using that more is, um, often children can then print from a social story with their routine. And so we have spent hours doing flip art with that and other things. And you can put it in there and create something that can be more personal. So just one of the first tools.
I like that. Um, and one other question about the, the, um, the playground area. So, um, congratulations on it going and getting better. But, um, the grassy area in the field.
The dirt area?
Yeah. Yeah, and dairy, maybe some crabgrass.
There's a lot.
Are we doing anything, um, there for letting kids, like, wanna play or play soccer?
Oh, we have two, Beth Barkum went out there and set up, helped us line two soccer areas. So it is, we don't use the whole playground because it's actually a lot to watch, that many children for the size that it is. Um, I know that the parents, um, for, um, T-ball and baseball, that field back there is bad. It's, it was bad in the spring. It wasn't a great summer. We went from all rain to no rain. Um, so we're just leaving it alone. Maybe nature will take its course and help, but not yet. So, yeah, you know, it's, it was a rough summer. I mean, even the lower field, we go down and use the lower field for P T. It's, it's tough, you know, but we go outside because we love going outside. What was nice about the equipment is it really spreads more opportunities and different types of movement. The last pieces that we just bought can be added on to, and they kind of go with, like, American Ninja, for the way you can crawl up things. Actually, I have to say, when it first went in, I thought, oh my God, the third and fourth graders are gonna be subset, it's not big enough. Because they felt like the other one was kind of a little kid's playground. Nope, they loved it. They figured out how to get to the top, the, uh, over the top. Uh, how many kids have been on it inclines, and it's, it's really been a nice piece for our oldest students.
Yeah.
Because the kindergarten is really small right now.
Are we, uh, compared to the irrigation, is it going down to that field, which is the track? Yeah.
Yeah, the lower, that's, that's the lower, yeah. Yeah, so, okay. Thanks, Lauren. B M S probably calls it the track field, we call it the lower field.
We do.
Any questions for Lori? Uh, we're gonna move on to Adam.
All right, um, not a lot to add. It was great opening. It was a lot of fun. It is awesome to have the kids back in the building. They bring a ton of energy, which is fun. They make the building live and breathe, and it's been awesome. They have done a great job with the cell phone van. We've had so far one cell phone in the office, one, like, I think that's pretty good considering. Five hundred kids are coming today and probably three hundred and fifty of them have phones. They're, they're doing a great job, you know, and I, I haven't heard a lot of, kind of like the high school, I haven't heard a lot about it, like, I think people are like, eh, it's not so bad. Just has to be often away. And the kids have just done a great job with it. Our new folks have been spectacular. They really fit right in. Um, I feel very lucky. You know, you hear all about teacher shortage, that they're legit, they're real, they, they really are short, it's much harder, harder to hire people. But we were very fortunate in the year where we had several retirements, so I feel like somebody was smiling at us. We're very fortunate. Other than that, I would get on one district initiative, we're gonna roll out next week at our faculty meeting. Owen and Chris are both gonna come to our September faculty meeting on, on the tenth. And we're gonna do a little thing with, with AI and also data privacy, because they're two big areas of focus this year. So that's good. We're gonna try to use those, those staff times, those full staff times to really push forward some areas of district focus. Let's turn once more on over B M S. And we're looking forward to open house, which is seventeen days. We split that over two nights, just because you never be able to get everybody to park in one night. You really, split it over two nights works much better. I know it's a little bit more apparent, but it's, you just would be turning people away.
Not a question, but just a comment, that entranceway has never looked better.
It is awesome.
It looks so beautiful.
Yeah, it is, it is, I, again, somebody's gonna smile at us, I feel very lucky.
Oh, no, it looks so good.
Look, yeah, cuz.
I have a question, when can they walk on the wildcat?
Because it's going off. We're gonna, we're gonna try to bring the cones on this Friday, that, we were talking about that with the student council, and we did roll out at our, our welcome back assembly. But we're kind of trying that high school slash college type of strategy where don't walk on the, don't walk on the wildcat, you know? Respect the emblem, has its roots in Concord High.
It is, it is.
You know, I used to work at Concord High, and it was always awesome. On a rainy day, you could walk in that main office foyer, and you would see footprints coming right up and around the school seal, and the school seal would always be dry. There, it'd be pouring buckets outside, and it was cool. The students all just did it. It was, it was a really awesome thing. That's kind of what we're going for, and we're hoping that will instill some real pride and ownership in our school for our students. We're hoping they, there's always gonna be the one or two, they're gonna go, I can step on the wildcat. Okay, you know, I'm not gonna worry about that, but that, that level of ownership, it is fun, and it does create community. And Kelly, our D, our student services coordinator, shared something really cool this morning at our administrative team meeting, we meet people at school board meeting each month. And she was sharing, one of her takeaways from the first week was, she overheard kids talking about B M S, and they were describing it as, you know, you know, middle school or whatever, but my school. And that whole idea, that whole feeling of, it's your school, yeah, my school. And the pride that, um, school spirit, going through that.
No, I think you also use that, don't walk on the wildcat, is also like, we don't walk on each other, kind of, right? I don't know, like...
I agree, it's hard to get them not to wrestle sometimes.
No, I know, but I mean, like, as far as, like, social, like, we need to learn. Um, I do have one question, though. So it looks incredible. I could not love it more when you guys described it. I could not picture it. It is fabulous. However, then you keep walking. Those other ones are so ugly now, like, and I'm not saying that we, like, use money or whatever, but like, where on the C I P is doing the best of the floors? Because now it looks really, I think, not those.
I think, I feel just thankful right now.
No, I know, I know.
That was a big undertaking, and those proxy floors are quite a bit, and structurally, the other floors are way better shape. I could see the paint spreading, like, that, that tripled paint scheme with the cream or white on the top, the gold, the blue. Looks great, but part why it looks great is it goes, folds into a roof floor. And a lot of our, rest of our walls are brick, like, not cinder block, but brick. So it would, we really have to think about how that's gonna spread, because I love the idea of spreading the thing, and I love the idea of keeping the communication going. But I think that'll become some longer budget conversations down the road, because it has a big impact.
No, it's gonna be, like, yeah, the paint will be a great one.
The paint will be easy, but you gotta think about that with brick. It's gonna, it's, it's different.
I have one other question, too, when we were, so, and Marcy, you can tell me if you don't want us to discuss this yet, but one thing that I really appreciated, and you're right, uh, were the very clear consequences, um, that you wrote for if they get, if a student gets caught with a communication device, like a cell phone or a smartwatch or whatever.
I'm gonna talk about that when it comes to policy. I think what we're asking for, if you saw it, and I... I don't know. Before it was, um, giving our building administrators a chance to work with students, and it was different at every level. And I think for more students, I know that from that, that students have been really great, they have that, um, if the boards, if we're sad, we're very grateful.
Well, I have one suggestion, and it's just as many parents have told me. The loss of recess is a really tough thing when kids really need to move their bodies. And so I get the idea of a recess detention, I might just maybe consider that they have to instead write a paragraph on why, uh, like, what the benefits are of not having our communication devices during the school day, or something like that. Because kids, a lot of kids need that movement time, so that they can sit down and be ready to learn afterwards. And I think anytime we take that away from, from kids, it's, it's just setting them up for, for more challenges.
It's something to consider, and we can talk about it more then. I think the idea around that is that it's progressive, not being, saying, don't have to do it. Then I get it, parents, right? Parents have to figure out, like, you know, their students' work tasks, that their participation is what, so, it, it...
No, I totally get it, but I was saying, like, instead of a recess detention, uh, you have to write something, or something like that. I don't know. Something to consider, totally agree, but just something to consider that parents have said to me that when their kids get recess detentions, um, they really don't like it, so.
Someone get to four of us, we have to go. Any other questions for Adam? Uh, move on to Beth.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to my report is that our students have been incredible to start the year. I feel really lucky. We have some strong student leadership at the school. Um, they've been awesome. Uh, also really just super proud of how our students have welcomed new students into the building, whether they're, um, from Cook Sid or from another school or, um, or international students. Just super proud of how our students have started off the year.
How's advisory going?
So I, obviously, I'm a little biased, but, um, I love having the opportunity to connect with students in that way. Some of the teacher, uh, one of our teachers who doesn't always, um, isn't, who is in specialized program, said she loves having students, um, from all around the school come into her program, and she gets to interact with them. I would say that our attendance at the start of the school year has been nominal. Um, it's the best start to the year with attendance that we've had, at least in my time. And maybe it's connected, I don't know.
And one thing that's not in your report, but that you mentioned at the high school open house, which I thought was interesting, is that a teacher will follow, can you say that a teacher will follow the, their kind of group of students through, so they'll really get to build this relationship, which I think is...
Yeah, so my, my background with that is previous school I worked at, I had advisors from freshman year to senior year, so I got to know them really well. Got to know their families really well, um, and it just was a really cool, cool feeling when they're seniors and graduates.
Mad, so Beth, do you feel like this ties in with your whole idea of the One Trusted Adult training, too?
Yeah, it, we partnered with One Trusted Adult when we were implementing this advisor.
That's great. And homecoming is next weekend.
Yep, and Eric is gonna be lights.
And Mike's gonna know how to make people involved.
Any other things for me? Uh, moving on to information technology. So, uh, IT had a really, uh, busy summer project-wise, uh, pretty meaningful work, uh, but at the same time, it's really fun. We got to do a lot of different projects that you don't get to do very often. Major projects like putting outdoor Wi-Fi out there, replacing critical infrastructure that supports, like, our financial systems, um, remedying, uh, bottlenecks in our network by upgrading, uh, some of the hardware in different data closets in, in our various buildings. We did some security upgrades in Dunbar. We rolled out printers and copiers. Uh, right now, we're working on a new way to, um, authenticate to the, the Wi-Fi that we have in place that doesn't involve, um, username, passwords, things of that nature, so that those, those threats don't get out in the wild. The authentication is based off of a device that the district owns in combination with, uh, a Google, um, user account. And those are things that are all just inherently built into the systems that we're standing on right now. So I expect we'll do a lot better in this year's IT, uh, security. Is that a lot of town service?
Um, we're, we're scheduling it, but I think, like, no limit with that.
Any questions for Chris?
That's great.
Oh, the wife is great.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to athletic director, Mike.
Uh, yeah, nothing, nothing new to add. I would just reiterate quickly, and talked about, um, I, I think I got a deal like six fifteen from Musco, that basically just said the same thing, and finally deal a check of the nearest unitile, um, and that's what you just said to us. We can just charge to get a perfect unitile, and I give them, it's, they're, they want me to get there, basically, if they need an hour, they get on the pole, and they connect it. That's it, so, exactly. I went to Gops Town last week just to, to check out their system, to get an idea of how they're in. We thought that we, we can do so, right, so I need to turn on, so, um, that's all.
So do we have, uh, backup lights if we can't have these up in time?
No, we have the sun on Saturday.
And, um, what are, what are the positions that have your coaches now? You said that there are just a few, I know football, that...
Yep, so, so you stand, essentially, you stand the football, um, you're fortunate enough to have, in the last minute, uh, an addition for JV for soccer. We have that time for, um, uh, JV, uh, also, uh, JV.
How about, uh, cell phone and, and the pad?
Uh, still in, uh, open, we're still taking applications, we're hoping to start next year.
Are we gonna have just varsity or JV as well?
We always have, and, and JV is always there, but we don't have the numbers, since I've been here.
So we're gonna be looking for a cell phone and any others?
Any questions? Moving on to, uh, the tiered systems coordinator.
Sure, um, I am pretty excited that all of our schools now have banners for America's Healthiest Schools. Um, I think it's pretty cool that the reason we went on that adventure was because a parent from Dunbarin recommended that organization for us to look into, and the wellness committee stuck into it, and we gathered a ton of artifacts and evidence of the awesome work that's already happening in our schools. Um, and I was just able to read paperwork, um, but I had no idea what was gonna come out of it, so the fact that all of our schools were recognized, um, and as of right now, we're the only school in New Hampshire that has that designation, but the secret may be out of the bag, that, you know, you can go through this process. Um, so the banners have come, and I'm pretty excited to be able to have that, um, across our schools. Um, at the time of the report, I had not conducted the One Trusted Adult Training for paraeducators on the second professional development day. That was awesome. Um, I had about twenty paraeducators voluntarily come on that day. A great mix of brand-new, first-day-of-work employees and people who've been here for fifteen, twenty years, and they, um, really melded and had some time, um, to collaborate together. So that was really awesome opportunity to, uh, focus on our paraeducators to, to start the year. Um, and then finally, today, just an example of pride, I see it all the time as I'm bouncing around the schools. I went into the bathroom downstairs this afternoon, and a child, who I did not know from the elementary school, was cleaning the counters on the sink. And she just said, "We have to keep this place clean." No other adult in there with her, no other kids with her. I just gave the kid a high five and said, "See you later." But, um, just examples like that, of our kids are really, you know, take our school seriously, and I'm very proud of that.
I got a question. I, I just went to the America's Healthiest School website, and you're right, we're the only school district that's listed in New Hampshire. But what is it?
But what does it mean to have different amounts of work? For example, Bo Loria School has only one award. Sorry.
It's alright.
But Ohio has four.
Correct. So very bad. So there were nine different categories that you could submit evidence for. Um, and when I started the journey, I was over ambitious thinking I was gonna do all nine for all four schools and that was way too much work. Um, so I ended up doing like three or four for each school. Um, really trying to hone in on areas that I thought could be recognized for those schools. So for example, Bo High School's food service, um, program received that recognition. Bo Elementary School's, um, active life and culture with all the stuff Tracy does and walking Wednesdays and all of those things. Dunbar's parent and community involvement. So it really came down to what I had artifacts and evidence for, and I had no idea what was gonna come out of it. I have reached out to them asking for the rubric, um, so I can be competitive with myself and, you know, use those opportunities to grow, but it was our first time doing it. So.
Is there a reward for that?
For water.
Well, don't worry. I already talked with the art teacher at the EMS. Also, I said, "If you know, come and get some of those trophies." I suggested we save them and do art projects. So maybe one of those basketball holding trophies could be a glass of water. Holding a glass of water enjoying you will get a trophy.
I, I just think it's nice, and I just wanted to point out that our food service got recognized. I know there's been lots of complaints to the board and such about our food at the high school. It was nice that we actually got recognized for helping and doing what we do.
If I could say, like, the food is good, especially compared to all our, uh, other schools that I've been to. So I don't really have any, I mean, anything.
Alright, anything else for Beth?
I was just kinda curious how many community members that are not affiliated with the SAU or the, um, district are on the wellness committee right now.
So, well, nobody's on the wellness committee right now because we haven't started it for the year. So we're gonna do an all call. John and I were emailing about it today. Um, I was gonna try to do a meeting next week, but I forgot to put the all call in my Wellness Wednesday. So I don't wanna have a meeting with me and Jenna. Sorry Jenna. Um, so I will put it in for October and then we'll have, um, a meeting the first day of October, uh, first Monday.
So another thing that I kinda wanted to talk about, which you're in charge of, are, are care closets. So for those of you that are here that don't realize, um, we have roughly about 5% of our population that is economically, um, disadvantaged. So, um, some places, I don't know if you guys have ever seen, there's something called a care closet. And they can go in there. So if a student's family is struggling and they don't have shampoo, uh, they can go in and get shampoo. They don't have deodorant, they can get deodorant. Um, unfortunately, this is, this is how it is. But, um, I think, so I went in, I know it's the beginning of the year. Um, but I've seen them in the different buildings. And I'm thinking that this is a great opportunity for us to reach out. There was a community member who actually approached me and she's done things like this before. So like if you've ever seen like with women shelters or things like that, when they come in, they come in and they need a lot of stuff. And they try and set it up like it's more like a store. So there's systems to it. If there's three things of deodorant and two are taken, they have a count. So they know, okay, we're short and they can put an all call up to the community or whatever. It's just an option for us to. I know that the, the students then take it on, but I think that we could get more.
So we have a system in place for that. We actually had at the high school, um, a shelving unit tucked away in the library. Um, and we ended up, stuff was going bad, right? Like it wasn't being used, it wasn't being taken. So we really minimized what was there and students were saying that even though it was tucked around the corner, they didn't feel like it was private enough, um, to be able to go and access. So we took all of the shampoos, deodorants, all the personal hygiene stuff, hair elastics, those things. And the school counselors have them, um, in their offices. And so they can be, you know, more of a confidential conduit for that. Um, at the high school, we also have a QR code system where a student can anonymously, um, put in a request for something and I get it. And then, um, the interact club at the high school, um, has a lot of stuff. It will help funnel it and the system is, I will put it in a, um, identifiable bag, Trader Joe's bag on the front lobby, you know, and just tell that human, um, what that is. So it doesn't say just the Browns, you know, food, um, on the bag. So those systems are in place. Um, just yesterday I brought water bottles over to the, um, middle school. Evidence that people are drinking water at the middle school. Um, so the school counselors, I brought them a bunch of water bottles yesterday. Uh, the elementary counselors sent out kind of an all call to staff saying that you noticed a kid didn't have a backpack or supplies. Um, and when I've gotten those requests in the past, I've sent out community messages asking for donations. So the reason we haven't had like stock is there's no place to put it and we just have like overstock. I, I have bins and bins of hats and mittens and all sorts of stuff, but we're trying not to have stuff.
Yeah.
So we do have systems.
So there's a QR code?
Yeah. So at the high school, there's, um.
Are you scared of without a phone?
That's a great question. As I said that, I was like, that's what we had last year. We scared of their computers technically. Um, we could probably put the link to it somewhere. We could share it in advisory upcoming. Yeah, Matt and Brenda. Um, but the interact club helped with that last year. Yeah, and Michelle LeVoss has been super helpful.
Maybe if we had something also on our website.
Sure. We also just get, um, calls from people. So this summer, um, a member of the White Rock community reached out to me and, um, they had some people that wanted to sponsor kids with backpacks and supplies. I told them ages and grade levels, they brought it and they collected enough that actually it's Bo Elementary School, they sent in extra white sweatpants and tissues. So we have those extra for classrooms too. So often we sort of get cold calls and we just, you know, there's oftentimes where myself and the school counselors will now direct me.
I'm just thinking like if there's a way that we could make it so that parents who wanna help might not cold call or whatever, that there's some, just something to kinda think about. I wanna point out like Adam, um, one thing that I don't know if all of them did, but I have twins in sixth grade and they came home with, uh, the pre-reduced lunch aphrodisiac. And I have to say that every single child getting that and having it as their homework, to bring it back and give it to their, uh, teacher, regardless of if it was filled out or not, helps make it so that the kids that do need it, and I just wanna say absolutely value this job with that because that, that can make a huge difference and for kids who need to, you know, they need to eat. Thank you.
Anything else? Moving on to the action agenda. And the first of all, we've got a bunch of, one of our three.
I can do all three. I'll make a motion to approve the manifest for the period ending May 31st, 2025, June 30th, 2025, and July 31st, 2025. May 31st, 2025, in the amount of $2,864,897.95. June 30th, 2025, in the amount of $5,000, $5,6047.13. And the manifest ending July 31st, 2025, in the amount of $5,360,777.43.
Second that. I'll second that.
Discussion? None? All favors?
Aye.
opposed? Have it. Moving on. Personnel actions, resignations.
Yep. Um, if you're happy to see a resignation from Sarah Brooks, who's from our operation purpose. Um, so I would ask for some of those gratifications on the spectrum for the boss and Sarah.
Do I have a motion?
I will. The motion to Sarah Brooks, we accept the resignation of Sarah Brooks.
Second, any discussions? None? All in favor?
None.
Aye. Any opposed? Have it. Moving on. Our reason on, new hires done. Uh, moving on to financial checks and balances.
Okay, so Dwayne and I are in contact and we did a surface level explanation. Um, as you probably know, most entrepreneurs have business managers, but I just think there's something happening that we need to know, something probably, uh, if everything happens lately, um, we want to talk about how, how we know. One of the first things that I look for is our audit, if you're not doing audits. Um, some of these stories that you're hearing about audits weren't happening. Um, as a board, if you go every time we're here seeing a manifest, spending money for, um, potentially some revenue, that's a problem. Another problem is turnover rate. We start seeing turnover in our, serving in our business office or, or anyone at the SAU, that is something that will be, there's issues. In terms of what I see, so I see every committee's here in this packet. Um, I also see the brand management system, so GMS is where all of our brands are. And I have, like tomorrow I have a pile going to, but I see what, what's in there and what can help each one. I also see any larger, you know, over a thousand dollars transfers from one line to another. But I agree with that because, um, and then Dwayne gives me general entries, what feels like every single day, um, whether it's paying tuition or getting a tuition payment or, uh, financial retirement, just everything. So, um, sometimes they're pretty standard, sometimes some stand out and like, what is this? Um, but we're constantly, and I just think that there's, that's critical. Maybe SAU is, we're trying to make sure that those things happen. After this, I felt like we need to do a little bit more so Dwayne's gonna need a, um, a lot of, like, investigations. One of the things that I know we'll talk about is cash. Cash is important. We need to make sure that we can manage that, um, that goes. And so, um, we'll be really, uh, this is, you know, this is. I'll let you know when it's working out.
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, it was kind of a request that puts on the agenda. Certainly there's a very high profile issue that's happening in one of the districts in New Hampshire. Um, you know, with their mom, which is sad that it's that, it's happening. And I think it's just a, kind of a bunch of things, you know, all together. But their issue is a whole, vast of, um, things that, you know, I think I've done this long enough where there's some things that happen there that, that I just wouldn't do. Um, but, you know, you still should have, you know, somebody checking, you know, everybody needs their work checked. Um, nobody's, um, nobody works in a vacuum. And so for me at the Marcy has it right, you know, I want people to see and check and, and know what I do because it's incredibly important. And when it goes south, which it has in several places, that's really impactful to kids. You know, and look at a district that, you know, basically in the last, um, has reduced their staff by 40 positions. There's no way that doesn't have an impact on students at all that is made in the world. You're not gonna have sports, you're not gonna do bicycle transportation, you're not gonna do educational education in the same way. Your classes are gonna be higher. You're not gonna offer classes at all in some of those. Right. And so it's a, you know, it's, you know, it happens over time and it's, you know, it makes me, you know, it also makes me think, you know, revisit, you know, how I do surveys and surveys that, you know, looks better and be more informative to, you know, the board, administration, you know, the board, the SAV, the board. Um, you know, and, you know, I think there, there's an impression, I think, that it only happens in certain places. And that's not correct. If anybody remembers, like in 2003, the Bo School District ended the year in a deficit. It was not $5 million, it was $46,000. And one of the reasons the job opened that I applied for, started in 2005, was because that happened in a year, in this town. So I am conscious of that. I try very hard for, for something like what is happening in some of these other places to not happen in here. And do you think it's kind of a nuts and bolts thing? Is if you ever get a board report that doesn't have an expenditure report in it directly from your financial accounting system, you need to ask why that happened or what is going on, because that's not okay. And that's not gonna happen. I hope to be here several more years, but that certainly is gonna happen when I'm here. But when you have, you know, reports that are being given to you and they're in a format that you change by individual, that's not okay. You know, if there's a year where we don't have an audit, that's not okay. You know, the SAU technically doesn't have to be audited. It's its own budget. It, it, that's not requirement, it's not state requirement, it's not any state statute. But we do that. It's not free. It costs like $7,000 to have an audit done at the SAU. But that's something we're gonna do all the time because it's important, because those things are important. So to not have an audit since 2021, you know, that's just, that's just, that's not correct. Any questions? It's not a great topic.
It's important. We don't wanna ever have to sit up here and say, "We can't open the school because they can't pay."
Yeah. I mean, that was one of the, I mean, you know, there's no like instruction manual for this. You know, it's not like a real college course that you take to become a school business administrator. You have backgrounds, you have classes and have majors in different things. But the first audit that I went through, uh, here, but when I started in Summit with the Browns, heard the auditor who was in charge of that team, basically sat down and basically said, like Marcy alluded to, the key to the whole thing, and this sounds simplistic, but the key to the whole thing is cash. Do you have money to do things, to pay for things? And in this high profile situation in Claremont, they have no money. They don't have any money in the bank. And we have great partner at the town. You know, we provide them with a tax transfer schedule. Almost 70% of our revenue is taxes, both local and state, uh, education taxes. We give them a schedule. They send us 12 payments a year around, around or about the first of the month every year. And a schedule that we provide them. No questions. You know, if this is what we need to operate, that's what incentive comes. You know, but if you don't ask for reimbursement on federal funds and just ship money out the door and never ask for the money back. If you don't put your food service claims in appropriate and don't give reimbursement for the cost that you should be reimbursed. If you overexpend your budget, you run out of money pretty fast. And this is the culmination of all the years of, you know, just things that happen. It's, makes me very sad that that happened. But it also, you know, again, it kinda doubles down here. You know, wanting to make sure that that doesn't happen for Dunbar for that. So you should ask those questions. You should send me an email and say, "Hey, what is, what's this, what's going on? What is this expense? What, you know, I noticed this happened. How did you pay for that?" That's, I would, I encourage that kind of thing. Um, because that means that we're doing your job. And then I get questions from our staff, the same stuff. That's what should happen. You know, I should give those questions that, that are fully expected and encouraged. And so please.
I wanna thank you. I know I've definitely sent those questions. Being a new board member now, I'm missing some of the budget. And your responses are always very quick and, uh, very detailed to what's going on. So I appreciate, um, when I do have questions, the response time is very quick and very detailed.
Yeah, I think the other part too is there's unexpected things that happen in any, you know, budget. You know, like you have a budget that's making, you know, 1,900 kids, 300 staff volunteers. You know, basically the largest, you know, transportation system, you know, you know, town or running, providing transportation when we're doing food service for, again, 1,900 kids. These are, you know, simple kind of things that happen. So a lot of things can go right, but a lot of things can go wrong. And, you know, I kinda joke about the, the EMS. of things can go wrong, and, you know, I kind of joke about the EMS well, all those things that went wrong, those all cost money, that's not a project that came in great, under budget, it did not, and it was just every time you turned around, there was an additional thing, well, that money's got to come from somewhere, and so you got to figure out, okay, I got some savings over here, we can hire that staff, you start having, and that's what I, you know, kind of move stuff around, it's what you need, and try to make the puzzle come out of it, you know.
So, Dwayne, for many years, I was the person that was sending you those emails, I had so many, so many questions, as I always do, and you always handled them very well, so I don't know if you're having a bad day, but you're very, very professional and very educational.
And, and my other, you know, maybe we had to do this in Dunbar a few years ago, you know, when we have something that comes up unexpected, that is going to happen, and you guys would probably put, Marcy will know first, because she's right in the next office, but she'll be the next person to know, because that's what, you know, that's what we need, we need to make sure you know that, okay, this happened, usually it's around some unexpected, if you don't expect a special ed thing, a hiring issue, it could be as simple as, which Dunbar ran into this year, an open enrollment season, where a bunch of people change their elections, and it doesn't sound like that's a big deal, but if you go from paying, like, virtually no money for a health insurance plan, to thirty thousand, it doesn't take many of those to have a real issue, and especially in a budget that is a third size of the vote, so, we would need, and we would come to you and say, okay, this happened, this is how we're going to try to address it, but we might not be able to address it, so here's some other things that we can do to try to maybe address those things. My goal has always been, you know, I kind of do a lot of things that aren't really out of order, but our goal is always to have, a bunch, there might be a bunch of things happening in the background, but we don't want it to impact, or not, you know, because that goes far.
Any questions? Thank you, Mike, let's talk about something that you enjoy far more, bus fees.
It's by a bus, it's super fun, someone we need is, as usual, this is kind of something that, you know, I think I'll do it down before, this is the second bus that was approved in the, in the budget, twenty-five, twenty-six budget, we already did the other one, which has already been received in service, this one we just received two weeks ago, final step, you guys approve that, and then.
You need a book?
Yes.
To approve the.
I think the book should have been approved, the bus fees, I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I don't think we're gonna sort of get them.
All right. You ready, Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
And your votes? Let's have it.
Lauren, I was going to say that I am happy to, those last three minutes are burning a little bit, so.
Sure.
Given that, unless anyone has a burning desire to, for ranking, strategic planning, or something, I'd say for that, or.
I have a question for, for Dwayne.
Oh, sure.
About the, the water system at Bo.
Yeah, which one?
The memoirs.
Oh, the war, okay.
Was the tank inspected and revising process?
The old tank, or the new tank?
The new tank.
Yeah, the new tank was, they did all of that, it's, it's, uh, state has to come out, do what they do before, before we put it in the ground, after it was in the ground, they had to come and inspect it, so, it's a much different tank, the old tank was concrete, very old, not great, this one's plastic, you know, there's two of them actually, kind of, and it's went in the same area, so, yeah, should be great, I think it's great.
I have a question for Dwayne too on that, if that's okay, so, even though you're changing out the tanks and the testing that you're doing, that's great on the tanks, how are you handling the eighty-year-old pipes in the school with regards to the lead copper or what?
So, we switched out, swapped out, all the fixtures that tested high, and then did some other ones that tested, but one thing that hasn't been addressed in that building is the lines and the, so, we did the renovation in two thousand and five, we swapped out a lot of the domestic piping and made it plastic at that time, we didn't do the whole building, so there are some areas now, like a fifth grade wing, sixth grade area, that still have older pipes, so, we're going to see, we're going to test, retest the whole building, see if that addresses it, if not, we may have a CIP level project to replace those lines.
So, one thing, incorrect, so, when that's tested, they have it saved for a certain amount of time, and then you have first drop, drop, right, so you get the first bit, and that's how you know it's, it's a fixture that needs to be replaced, and then you go further down, you like, let it run, and you take another one, and that kind of tells you how far down the line the, the sample is coming from, so, when they do that, they do multiple samples, and then we can find out, okay, because it's not necessarily that we have lead pipes, we don't have lead pipes, what we have is actually solder, and when they use lead to solder two pipes together, so, it's possible that it could be further down the line, but that's how the testing is done, if anybody's like me and likes to know all the way it works, so, and correct me if I'm wrong?
No, and, and just, you have lead solder, that doesn't mean you have an issue, but that could be an issue, we have some at the elementary school, no question, we have some in this building, I mean, I don't know exactly when they stopped using that, but the high schools need to clean, ninety-seven, that the building was built, but this building and the memorial school have lead soldered in that system, so.
But that's why it was so important that when the building was open, the construction and renovation, that we looked at that, because once we can get into those pipes, it's, it's a lot easier, we don't want to close everything else, we don't have to go back in, I think that, right now, we know what the levels are for the state, I've heard that it could drop lower, and there are some school districts that choose to have it lower than what the state does, because they believe that it's that important, because lead is a neurotoxin that is irreversible, and it continues to build up, so, it's not just a one-time thing where you get a bunch of lead, you could have a little bit of lead today, a little bit in a week, a little bit in a, and it adds up, so, I think, as I've stated, I had a student that had lead poisoning, and I don't want any other child in this world to have to do the same, so, we're doing really our best to make sure.
A few things, one, why are we in this room, not in the high school auditorium?
We had originally scheduled, a while back, our meeting on August twenty-eighth, we booked it with open house, which we realized pretty late, it was because this building was late, and because the select board had reached out about possible different locations.
All the full-size chairs.
These are the full-size. I will also say, I should have done this during announcements, but our November meeting's going to have to be in an alternate, alternate location, because our auditorium lights are being redone, we don't have, nobody has access to the building for a few weeks, it's like the end of October to mid-November, so.
What's that?
You're saying you would prefer that in November?
Well, I love the beautiful buildings, it's just the accommodations. Dwayne, don't go, don't go anywhere, just stay, not a few years, a lot, many years.
There's a plan in place, it's not next year, but there's a plan.
One other thing that I recall talking about, that near the end of last school year, and I apologize if it was talked about or finalized, well, I missed a couple of those, but, staff and teachers, children, attendance at Bo, has that progressed, is that, and...
We paused on that, Judge, because of legislation, so open enrollment, there is, I don't know, three, four open enrollment bills, and we really didn't know where they were going to go, there was a small open enrollment one that passed relative to CT, uh, Billy's was CT, so it's not impacting us now, but I fully expect that those open enrollment bills will come back, this legislature's actually.
And then, quick little, little report, so, first grade, I, I love first grade, kindergarten, first grade, all the, sorry, my son comes home, supposed to sing, comes home singing songs, study, learn on his first day, it's very fun, so, always a good time, and my move up to middle school, fifth grade, that, that transition that we have from the elementary school into the middle school is amazing, and he is, he's not our academically implying young man, and he's doing well, and he's coming into, he's enjoying seeing his buddies in the hall, doesn't have classes with some of his buddies, but he gets to see them, that movement between classes is really, really great. One thing I've seen happen, Melanie made a point about recess detention, I don't love recess detention, as a parent, I, I think it has a ten, I've seen it get what I felt like, overused at times, as a, as a easy, it's good to remind kids of what boundaries are, in my opinion, and having, having consequences for your actions, it's also good to remind parents that there's consequences for your kids' actions as well, and a little bit of ownership from parents can go a long way, having to be a little inconvenienced to pick your kid up, might help you to reinforce some of this, some of the expectancy for classes, just a thought, I like the notion. Oh, Ava, I was told that there's not enough clocks in the high school, there's not enough working clocks.
Digital, digital.
No, 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 I, well, or they, or maybe my daughter's not looking for digital clocks, because she could not figure out what time it was, she had to go.
Yeah, just a lot of them, like, you know, there's like the lighting, I don't know, there's some clocks, but the students have a sign that says this is a liar, yeah. It's like, I actually, that's what I was trying to say.
I think perhaps the clocks could be looked at.
But I do not think we should go digital.
I agree. Yeah, it's another thing, it's good. And I guess, oh, sorry, I missed this, Ms. Jamadi is incredible, the school, the, not that everybody isn't, but her reach out and her touch points in being aware of what all of her students are doing in the building, is just, just incredible, it really is, it's something, anyway, oh, and my educator has not complained once to me anyway about clocks, so.
What about high school?
Just clocks, just clocks, that's all she needs, just clocks.
We can do that.
Yes.
All right, so.
Could you state your name and hat?
What's that?
Could you state your name and hat?
Sure, my name, my name is Jenny Speck, I have four children, they vote in the district, I'm just a parent, I saw this posted online, so, I got to tell, I'm sure I was part of it, and as I was listening to your composition, I am interested in school ranking composition, but I had some, thought about some suggestions while I was listening, as we're kind of going along, when we talked about the paint, right, and making that kind of group, one thing that I got to do as, more in the high school, and you see it here in both eyes as well, is the wonderful murals, so what about art honor society, doing a community service project, and, and putting some beautiful murals on the walls or something, just, just to throw it out there as a suggestion, as a way to involve, you guys talked about other ways to get the community involved, to kind of give that ownership, and, and, you know, when students take part in that as well, I think that'll have some pride, like, oh yeah, I helped make that mural last year, or something like that, and kind of freshen up the space that way, and then, instead of, I also agree about the recess detention, but you have, in, in middle school anyway, you have wind, right, you're going to wind walk, what about wind detention? Where, I, yes, I understand sometimes it, it affects, but what if that takes you out of your favorite music class, what if that takes you out of, you know, something, I'm not saying softy arts, but it, I feel like it would be something that would necessarily impact them, you know, same thing like recess, right, it's the same idea, you want it to impact the students, I agree on the comments of parent responsibility, and that can go a long way too, but I also think it's important, like you guys mentioned, to have it progressive, right, you can't just jump to write that, I think you'll have people in the uproar, and that's not what anybody needs, as a parent, and as, as you guys being administrators and the school board, so, just to throw it out there, maybe wind is a possible solution, depending on. I don't know if I would, as, as an educator, really take away the wind, because I think that there's a lot of kids that get some extra help that they need, and also, as you said, like, we have a phenomenal music department, and they really are working hard on it, so I don't, but, we do have those extra specials, or something like that, or something else. I mean, I'm sure that Adam could come up with some other options, other than a recess detention, but I think that wind is, in my experience, and other people could definitely reach out from home, everybody reach out, but in my experience, school wind can be really helpful, and you don't understand one thing, you don't want these kids to fall behind, you don't want to affect them, as we don't want to affect them academically, because moving their bodies during recess is really important, right, and so that way they can focus when they give it to class, if your student needs a little extra help at something, or they're preparing for a band concert, and not being in that would really screw up the whole team, right, you know what I mean? So I think, I, I trust Adam.
One of the things that you'll see in here, and when we get to this conversation about the social policy recommendation, I, I intentionally took the consequence part out when I sent it out to families, so, we have people all up in arms saying, this is what we're going to do, is that it's going to, it's not going to be cut and dry that this happens to, across the board, right, not everyone will get recess detention, not everyone will have a wind intention, it's going to be based on that student and their needs, so we'll definitely take that into account, but my hope is that this will, it will allow us to kind of grow with how things change, right now, they're fantastic, right, we, this could be a honeymoon phase, I have no idea, but if things change, we can be able to shift, and I think, I think we'll find that the language that we want to add around consequences allows us to do that.
I think what the judge was saying was really pretty key, is that recess detention can be kind of overused, I do believe in progressive discipline, I think, we all probably believe in progressive discipline, they're kids, they're supposed to goof up, if they don't goof up, they're, probably not my kid anyway, but you, you expect them to, and I think, if I put my teacher out, I mean, I think the teachers sometimes feel like, the recess detention is more of a safe consequence to give, it's like that little check, it's that half-step, but I think the key is, is progressive, where I think we can overuse it, I don't disagree with you, I think we probably do, because I think if I was back in my classroom days, you know, we're already knocking off, you're going to stay in for recess, it's easy, it's quick, but you, in my experience as an administrator, an administrator in this town for a long time, I give my maximum movement in terms of student behavior, when I pick up the phone and I call you as a parent, I have had very, very few calls, and I haven't had a receptive person on the other end, but there's also sometimes an uncomfortable conversation, if you haven't made a bunch of those, so I get why the recess detention is easier, so, you have some good teacher reps in this room right now, and I'm sure that maybe some of this feedback can go back with them, and maybe it's more referrals to the office after the first time, and then Monica and I, Mr. Matty, who you were talking about, we make those calls, and we can, maybe we progress more quickly, whereas I think, I think people are really well-intentioned, and they're going to that recess detention, because it's a quick check, and it's not, that the behavior's egregious, because the kids are really great, they're just great kids who make kid choices sometimes, and they, but I, I've definitely heard your feedback, and I'll, I'll make sure I have, I can have some follow-up conversations on the other end about perhaps making that discipline be more progressive, a little quicker, thank you for sharing it.
I'm just going to say, I don't think any teacher says that recess, you know, take away, because they want to take away recess, they're hoping the behavior will change, but, just as a comment that, you know.
I agree with you, Monica.
Certainly with the elementary level, we don't like.
I just think the bigger movement in behavior, because kids are kids, they're going to forget, but if mom and dad...
But if mom and dad reinforce it at home, it definitely does have a little more staying power. And they do, they're great conversations.
This Ryan Bird, one twelve Cox Road. On the policy that you did discuss here in just a minute, one of my children in the high school had an interesting situation that occurred this week. The teacher pulled their cell phone out in the middle of class, checked a text, responded to the text, put it back in their pocket, then continued teaching. So the policy applies to students as currently written. However, in the preamble, it talks about that you'll create a non-distracted learning atmosphere or experience. I forget how it's worded in like the very first sentence. How does this policy apply to teachers? Because all of a sudden, we teach by example, we need to show that. So if we're not holding our teachers to the same level, you have phones in all of the rooms that they can be communicated with, you have email, you have other ways to communicate with your teachers.
Sure, so if I can address that, the law is in regard to students only. Well, we, the message that we provided to all of our staff is that we need to be good models for that, right? We don't want to be distracting to or for them. There are instances where we have to use our phone to get into the building. We have to use our phones, staff. We have two-factor authentication where, so you'll see teachers at the high school, they're not just assigned to one classroom. So if they leave from one classroom and go in another classroom and get back on their computer, they have to use their phone to authenticate. So there are times that they're going to have it up, but we are definitely sending that message to be models for our students.
This definitely wasn't one of those. It was during the middle of the discussion, stop, pull their phone out, it buzzed, everybody heard it, they pulled it out. Response said, hold on, I got to respond to this text, respond to the text, put it back in their pocket. So again, just that modeling of that behavior, you're going to put this on the students, you got to enforce it across the board.
But I do agree, I understand why, the point is there are.
Oh, absolutely, but during instruction.
But it wasn't that, it wasn't that.
I hear you and that's why I say it is something that we are addressing and have addressed. There's not a policy that prevents staff from using their phone. And so that's not something that we can do, but we can ask that they be good models for their students.
Yeah, maybe some guidance too, like saying if it's a personal matter, please wait. Unless it's an emergency, of course, but please wait until we have free period or something. Matt, I'm sure Matt, I'm sure you guys are enjoying that. But thank you for letting us know.
I guess one more thing, clocks. Both of my kids in the high school, it's just the high school have said, we use our phones to check the time, especially during their free periods or during lunch, and they're like, we can't even do that anymore because all the clocks are wrong. Or they don't work.
There aren't many clocks in the hallways. I did notice that, because I went to try to find the time. I was trying to not use my phone on open house night, I wrote down the schedule on a piece of paper and I was like, I don't know what time it is in the. Yeah. So kids are out in the hallway, socializing as they should be without their phones and they like.
Are the clocks.
This is the first time.
I haven't heard you.
But aren't our clocks, like, are they on some sort of system so they're all on the same time?
Most of them are.
Of course.
Okay, okay.
Is there any other public comment?
We definitely got the clocks.
I'm ready. I'm going out of.
Tonight, he's going to be on Amazon.
Just to clarify, there will be one more public comment opportunity?
At the end.
Yes.
Always. At the very end, after we go through everything else.
Alright, I think we can continue on with school ranking.
Yep. So the school board asked for a brief explanation of school rankings. We did do this, I want to say twice last year.
Yeah, you didn't really.
It was more comprehensive, is that, I believe we posted that on our website. If not, we can post it to the website, so it's a clearer picture of how schools are ranked and how we fall within that. So I, the formula for, this is based on U S News and World Report rankings. I believe last year we were twenty, the one that just came out recently, Matt chime in here at any point of it. We were sixteen. The way that that's broken down is by college readiness. The way that that's broken down is if you're APs, you're AP students, you're AP students who take the test and those who pass the test. And if you have ID, which is international graduate, you're an ID school, which a long time ago that was determined that we weren't going to do. That's thirty percent of your score right there. And what we heard, I believe Trevor was still our student rep, fantastic student, took up a ton of, you know, AP courses. When students, students are, their senior year, by the time the AP test comes around, they've already gotten into the school. And so they don't feel that burning desire to take, to study to take that AP exam. And it's not, we're not requiring it. The school and the school board supporting this has always supported opening up AP classes to anyone who wants the challenge of taking them. And so a lot of schools will have certain criteria that you have to meet in order to take a course and that's not something that exists here. Another twenty percent is your state test proficiency. Another twenty percent is your state test performance. Those we can score, you know, well in, right? That's, that's within our purview, meaning we can't do anything about ID participation because it's just not a thing for us. We also, there's ten percent that goes towards underserved student population. So that's not something where we score very high on at all. There's something called college curriculum rep that's also under variety in ID courses. That's worth ten percent. And then graduation rate is worth ten percent, which is in a place that we score very high. I think Matt did the metrics and other schools that's ranked above us this past go-around. We ranked higher than most of them, our graduation rate.
Correct. Yeah, most of the categories Marcy was talking about, we were ranked as good, if not better, than the schools ranked above us. Top ten in all those categories. Marcy's actually right, we're the diversity score, that's where we take, that's where it was, that's where our numbers were lowered. One important thing, just to point out in my report, a school that last year in twenty twenty-four was ranked number one, this year is no longer ranked because it's lower than sixty-one. So I think that just says something about the metrics that are used to evaluate. I don't think this school could really go from being top of the state to unranked in just one year. So I would take all of this with a grain of salt. The thing that I think is really important to look at is our college and career readiness score. The state has a goal of sixty-five percent and our rating is ninety-one percent. Reason I think it's important to look at that is that takes into account AP scores, it takes into account the depth and breadth of our course offerings. It also takes into account CRTC. We're fortunate that our kids can go to CRTC and take advantage of that. And we have students who didn't take any AP classes but who have incredible certifications that make them very, very career-ready. That I think is a very important thing for us to look at. So college and career readiness, that's the metric I think that's really important for us to look at.
And just to comment on that too, we, because there's been comments about us kind of dropping, one thing we made a conscious effort and we talked a lot about in the board, I want to say, years, no, I can't remember now, four or five years, was they almost doubling our CRTC enrollment. And it was costly, but there was, there was an interest in our school needing to do that and to push those kids towards these certificate programs that they wanted to do. Not pushing them towards it, but encourage them, if they wanted to do it, yes, there's space for you. We will make this, try to make this happen for you, for juniors and seniors in particular. And those are kids that otherwise maybe would have taken an AP class here or there or also are going to CRTC and not taking AP classes. So we can't offer as wide a variety as AP classes because we just don't have the involvement. And I think that's something we consciously decided as a board and maybe it hurt our rankings a little bit, but it felt like that's what the community wanted.
We used to cap.
We used to cap how many students and now we, then we stopped and it increased substantially because it was a big budget line for us that, you know, decided as a district though that it was important. And, and I still stand by that decision, but I do think it maybe hurt us in the world rankings or whatever.
I guess just one thing I don't want to add, just said college career readiness. Let me add right now, the state has threshold, I think it's sixty-five percent. We've got two, two factors of college career readiness where we say, out of a hundred and fifty-six students, we have a hundred and forty-two. That's like above beyond, I might not take out myself, a hundred and fifty percent. It's well above beyond where you need to be. The other part is the school council, all the high schools put together this really awesome data that I mentioned for your school year, what the students are doing after graduation. That's the really important thing, that's what we should want to have in the recent. And it's, it's just great to see that they're, they're going right into over there. They're going into rare technicals or they're going to public, really one of our services. There aren't, there aren't too many that are. So that's, so.
I was just simply going to add that our SAT scores went up pretty significantly this past year. Our average score is fifty points higher than the average state, say, New Hampshire average. And of all New Hampshire schools, we're sixty points higher than New Hampshire public schools. The rankings that came out don't take into account the jump that we made this year, this past year with SATs. So my, I think I'll own it out for like the college and career readiness. That's the thing that I think we really got to look at. That's the one I'd love to get up to a hundred percent.
I think that some of the parents also might be concerned because EBS was number forty-five, while Bedford had number two, number seven, and number nine. And BMS was number forty-three, while Bedford is number three.
All of our conversations have been focused on this one.
Yep.
No, but I think that. Down that road, I think, give us an opportunity.
No, exactly, I think that this might be, this is what I'm saying. This might be something where we have another presentation and to give a better understanding. Because when I saw that, I, you know, of course I was, I was very concerned. So I think that if I'm concerned, no one, maybe a little bit more than the, the average parent because.
We talked to the Bedford assistant superintendent, they're very focused on rankings. They make sure that they hit all those specific areas. And I'm going to speak out of turn here. I don't believe that's what we want to focus on, I think we want to focus on each individual student's learning and make sure that they're meeting their specific individual goals. We can certainly make sure that we're meeting all the parameters to make, make our rankings go up. They also did some work last year, and Lori can speak to it better than I can. The answer to that scores were, the answer to that scores were so great.
No, I think, I truly, I just think that it would be, be a good idea for us to put on something for educating, like what goes into these scores. Because when parents hear, like, okay, we're focusing on each student, but we see those numbers and we see our rating going down, there's concern. They want to understand.
It's not, it's going up.
I know it's, it's hard to, but very much so, those rankings are hard to measure. And I think that's just hard to put out there and say, but it is, some of them, depending on if it's niche or specific or what, there's a ton of them. Some will be paid for, some of them, there's a financial aspect to it, right? Some of them have your athletic facilities as an example of where you, where you go out on your, right? How many sports teams have. So there's so many different measures. I think when we gave the presentation last year, one of the questions that I'm ahead on it is like, what do we want? What do we want our students? I want kids to increase, I want kids to observe, I want them to know the material services if that's what they want. And these rankings don't necessarily reflect that. I think they're, they're, you know, noteworthy and interesting for us to talk about, but there's just so much more to our students.
No, absolutely, but I think like this is going to be something that parents maybe want to have another chance to like learn about. And I think that that's, just you saying that right here, Marcy, to explain the different types and that there's, you know, money involved. I think that that is a great way for parents to say, yeah, that our SAU, our district is going in the direction that we want. Do you. We can find elementary in the middle on a future. Yeah.
I certainly think educating us in this town, one of the metrics at the elementary school, I love it, middle school. High school sure matters to AP, you know, like if you don't have it, maybe you can, maybe you'll miss it. So I think knowledge helps, you know, dispel any kind of, because we all intrinsically think if the rankings go down, will the value of my property change? That's concerning. And it might not be true.
If I may? I mean, like, I came, I moved here two, well, a couple years ago. And like, one of the things that we researched with the public schools and one of the big sources was US News. That's like the first thing whenever you go to like top high schools in New Hampshire. So I would say US News is pretty big. And yeah, it might be, it might well be arbitrary, but I feel like it's important for us to keep our rankings at least more high and not even fussy about that kind of stuff because it like gave matters. And like, it's almost like a self fulfilling prophecy, but like when it comes to diversity and stuff and different backgrounds.